Good afternoon, everyone. This is the regular monthly meeting of the Stormwater Committee. It's Wednesday, October 15, 2025. It's 1:00 PM. This is a public meeting, being video and audio recorded for posting on YouTube. So I have call this to order at 1:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Turned its roll call.
David Phillips here.
Tom Ferry.
Dan Higgins here.
Nancy Gulat here. So we have a new member. Robert Woods was our representative from the Planning Board and served for well over a year. Thanks for your service, Woody. We enjoyed having you onboard. Our new rep from the Planning Board is Dan Higgins. How long you been on the Planning Board, Dan?
About over two years.
I was gonna say two.
Yeah.
As in too long. Seems like more than that. Welcome, Dan. We're glad to have you onboard. And along those lines, we have an initiation that has to take place. So, Mr. Ferry, I'll turn this over to you.
So it's informative.
Is it optional?
No. You really should share it.
Okay.
Yes. So we have brochures for the Stormwater Committee. You might be quizzing at the next meeting. It's useful information. Also, the DEP side, which you'll find that we parallel with that. And it's very similar to planning board rules and regs. We don't make up a lot of the rules. We just need to have the tone of follow them. That's what it's about. Some other miscellaneous information, some of this we discussing today.
Very important. No calendar?
No, no calendar.
Okay.
Year's almost over. That's a gripper. It's got a slogan on it. What slogans this one? Grip on Stormwater. Yeah. And I know you're kind of a whimsical guy, so you got a frisbee, too. Same thing, be solution for stormwater solution.
Okay, awesome.
You even get a bag to carry it all home.
I will cherish them, thank you.
So in those brochures, the one that's in color, that's right from the DEP, excuse me, EPA. It really concerns more along the line of industrial or huge developments as far as their requirements, which is what we try to follow. And the one that's copied, black and white, that's more relevant to smaller projects, home sites. If somebody puts in a huge septic system, there's rules in there. But again, our bylaw pretty much follows that. So welcome aboard. Along those lines, I think you already noticed, but Weston and Sampson is in the process of reviewing everything, stormwater. The bylaw, the regulations, they've already completed the first phase of testing, which was sent to EPA, copy to EP. I'll make a note to copy on the MS4 that went in the last Friday in September. They sent a second report. And I will also make sure you get that. They're continuing to work on the bylaw and regs. They waited to do those till last because the testing had to be completed before June 30th, so it would correspond to the reporting period. So that was the outfalls in testing, dry weather testing, wet weather testing. The good news is they looked for illicit discharges and didn't find any. We haven't found any either. Ones that have been reported to us have not been something that would be created locally by a homeowner or something. We had a couple of leaking trucks that the companies reported to DEP and copied us on it. And all we did was make note of it so that we could put in the MS4 for whatever year it was, that we had been notified about a leaking fuel truck and whatever else had happened. And it was taken care of by the owner of the vehicle, but we just noted that there was a discharge and it was appropriately cleaned up. So I will email those to you for your information. I'm thinking that the engineer, her name is Jerice Schwartz, who works for Weston and Sampson, will have something for us in November. When we get that final report, we'll have to go over it. We'll have to have meetings with various boards and committees because it does affect them and fine tune it or make changes, whatever we feel needs to be done. Eventually, when we get the proposed bylaw, we will need a public hearing because we'll be taking it to town meeting. So a bylaw has to go to a public hearing prior to the town meeting. You have to have a public hearing for bylaws, a public meeting for regulations. So I think one of the major changes that we're aware of, that we've talked about a number of times, is the area of disturbance for stormwater permits is 35,000 square feet. And we've talked about going to an acre, which is the federal regulation. But we'll see how it all comes out when we get her proposal. So maybe by the November meeting, there will be something coming along. But that's where we are with that. I think she started, when did she start the testing, Tom? Was it about March? Would you guess?
Started, yes.
Around March? Okay. And this is all being paid for by AP money that we applied for way back when. So we're hoping to wrap it up, at least her work, by the end of November. But definitely, I think December is the, I'm thinking that's the cutoff, but I'm not positive. But I'll check with the town accountant on that. So those are some of the things that are out there. Does anybody have any old business? I don't have anything here.
We do have a guest on. That must be that Conny Street address.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here.
Can you bring him up?
He is. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Could you pronounce your name for us, please?
Yes. Hi, my name is Carlos. I'm the owner's project manager, managing the Syrian Pizza renovation project. So we're adding two residential units behind the store and one office as well. And so far, we got approval from the from the Board of Health Department agreed to add those. And last thing, we had a meeting with the Planning Board. We were talking about the storm, the water, the stormwater management. So we were saying that we're not touching the envelope or any structure or the roof or anything. We're just adding some walls inside, splitting.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
Can you get closer to a microphone because it's difficult to hear you?
Is it? Okay.
Or can you turn that up, Tom?
It's almost 100.
Let me try.
Would you say your name again, please?
Yeah, Carlos.
Carlos.
Carlos and the last name.
Saifan.
Carlos Saifan. I don't want to say it wrong. Is that correct?
Yes, you can call me, it's easier.
All right. Before you finish your explanation, I just want to have the members of the Stormwater Committee say their name and what committee they represent. The Stormwater Committee is actually made up of representatives from various boards and committees in the town. So they're all connected somehow. And that way, they can go back to their respective boards and committees and keep them up to speed on what's happening with the Stormwater Committee. So I'll start to my left.
David Phillips, Conservation Committee.
Tom Ferry, Dan Howard Department.
Dan Higgins, Planning Board.
Nancy Gulat, I represent the Board of Selectmen, but I'm not a selectman. So the reason you're on the agenda is because you met with the Planning Board and they asked us to just get in touch with you to get more details, to find out whether or not there is anything that would fall under our jurisdiction. Now, my understanding is that you're going to be doing renovations inside. Is it the two-story apartment building or is it the pizza building?
It's the pizza building and the garage behind it. So it's one store.
All right. So will the pizza business stay there or is that going to be turned into apartments, too?
The pizza store?
The restaurant?
Yeah, it's gonna stay.
All right, so you're working in the back part of that building?
Correct.
Okay. And how many apartments are you talking about?
Two apartments and one office, one small office.
Okay. Will you be doing any work in the restaurant or is that still going to stay the way it is right now?
It's gonna stay the way it is.
Okay. The current septic system for that building, does it have the capacity to handle the two apartments and the office?
Correct.
All right. Will you be doing any work physically outside the building?
No.
Okay. Obviously, our area of concern would be land disturbance. So that eliminates pretty much Stormwater Committee requirement for a stormwater permit. Do any members of the Board have any questions for him?
No.
No, I mean, I've heard is presented to the Planning Board and our opinion was that there was no impact to stormwater. We just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything, which is why we asked you to invite him here today.
Okay. So based on everything we've heard and from what the Planning Board has already talked about is we don't see a reason for the Stormwater Committee to get involved with this project. We will notify, well, Dan's here so he can notify the Planning Board that we met and talked to you and that we don't see any reason for a Stormwater Committee to require anything. So you'll just be dealing with whatever boards probably planning that you're dealing with now.
So you had asked at the last Planning Board meeting about blanket wavering of all stormwater related. So sounds like that won't not be an issue. So tonight's meeting, I don't know if you're attending tonight, that'll just be revisited and the Board can make a proper decision based upon that, so.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much.
The other thing you need to know is if by any chance you have to do anything outside the building, if you disturb 35,000 square feet or more, you would be required to have a stormwater permit and we would be talking to you about that. Obviously, if you were dealing with a septic system, you'd be dealing with the Board of Health, too. So right now, we're good to go and you're all set.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, bye-bye.
Fill me out back. What's inside a garage or is it a garage?
It's garage right now, yes.
Does anybody use it?
I'm not aware of it.
Was it, who was it? Dave, was it Dave Rose?
That was a couple of weeks ago. We thought about 15, 20 years?
25.
Oh, no, a lot more than that, a lot more than that, yeah. I remember when the front part, the restaurant, was Dayton TV and was it appliances? But they sold televisions and record players. Now, if they were there, they'd have customers again. And I'm thinking appliances. Then it got turned into a pizza place. Unanticipated items. I do have something here. I did not put this on the agenda, so we will not get into a lengthy discussion. Tom, this is the proposal from Weston and Sampson?
Yes.
All right. You got it on your machine? Okay, so I'm gonna give Dave and Dan copies of this. It came in last night. So what this is about is there are three homes on Horton Street. They went to the Planning Board. They got a large lot divided into three house lots. The father will live in the middle lot and the two children, adult children, will live on either side. Because of the amount of land disturbance, each lot itself is more than an acre, which well exceeds the stormwater bylaws, the regs. So and because we don't have anybody to do the inspections that are required, this is a proposal from Weston and Sampson to do the work that would have been done by a stormwater agent if we had one. So I've sent this over to, a copy over to Alf Atako. Told him I would be in touch with him about this because the next step would be for the town to issue a contract for services. And basically, the second page shows what will be done. This will be based, this is based on what is required when the town issues a stormwater permit. And I was able to find an old, old, a stormwater permit that it was issued. It's for the solar farm behind the Rujos. But I'll just pass this around just so you understand what it is I asked Weston and Sampson to do.
So what's the next step? They don't have the permit yet?
The application has been, it's supposed to be held at the Board of Health. So the next thing is we can issue, when, they need to write what needs to go on the back. So what you're looking at at the front end, that's kind of description of the project. And what the boxes that are on the right side, this is, this form is on blue card stock and it's printed on both sides. So when the stormwater permit is issued, which is what you have in your hand, the person doing the inspections, back in the old day, it was a stormwater agent, he would go out and make little entries in those boxes that shows when he made visits and what his comments or findings were and all that. What's on the back is the meat of the whole thing. And so because we don't have anyone to take the plan and look at what was approved by the Planning Board, the Conservation, whoever, they're gonna write the terms and conditions for the back of the permit. They'll do the front and the back. And then they will provide an engineer to go do the inspection. So what you see on page two, field investigations, things like that. They're gonna provide the services for three house lots that a stormwater agent would have done. And he was a PE, so obviously, you need somebody qualified to do these inspections to make sure that they fit the requirements of everything that's considered important conservation, the Planning Board, Board of Health, so forth, so on. So what you're looking at is the proposal from Weston and Sampson to have somebody do the, review the approvals, which I believe have already been done because he lists the documents he got from the Planning Board and the Conservation, no, ZBA. And I know that Lisa was sending this stuff from the Conservation Commission. Of the three lots, there is one lot that has got wetland issues and the Conservation Commission is dealing with that. So this in effect replaces our stormwater agent that we used to have. So this, whoever gets assigned this task from Weston and Sampson will complete this work, make the entries when the site visits are made and make sure that the work is done according to the approved plans from whatever town boards are involved in this, okay?
And you said you thought it was CBA? CBA was the approving authority initially?
I know that ZBA, both ZBA and Planning were approved.
So Planning probably just, I know, I kind of remember Planning just said, you have enough frontage to split the lots with no comment about whether they're buildable. So it was just a split the lot thing?
Yeah, so that's.
About what you want to build.
Right, so on that.
Okay.
There's comments about the Planning Board.
Yeah, okay.
That, that pretty much covers that. So the price for Weston and Sampson to provide oversight for these three house lots is $9,810 or $3,270 per home. We've made an initial site visit. Tom and Lisa, you've been up there, Dave?
Yes.
And Abel was there, right?
Yeah, so I, there's nothing else we need to do at this time. The next step would be, like you say, Board of Health, finish filling it out.
Well, the next step is I gotta get the town administrator to issue the contract for them to do the work. Then we'll get the terms and conditions back.
Before the 53G setup?
Yeah, oh yeah, the money's gonna be on deposit before we can issue anything.
That's what I'm saying. So I would say that the permit's gonna be finished filled out, get the money and initiate the contract then.
No. I'm gonna ask the town administrator to issue a contract for services for all of what's described there. I'm gonna ask Weston and Sampson, provide the information. In other words, link up this form as it applies. They can do three individual ones or they can do one, but I think three individuals probably because it's three addresses and we know one of them's got wetlands. So three stormwater permits. Give these to the Board of Health. They'll collect the money. I think it's 250 a lot for a house, something like that.
Plus the 3,000 change.
The homeowners, the lot owners, have got to provide the money for each of the lots. Then Weston and Sampson can begin. They, we can, once we get the permit, once we get the application, stormwater permit front and back, we give that to the Board of Health. She can issue the permits and collect 100, 250 per lot. Weston and Sampson will not begin working until this money is on deposit in the 53G account. So after having a chance to talk to Lisa, we've got to get in touch with the gentleman.
Ralph and Liz gotta get onboard. It's wrapped up.
But right now, we're waiting for the contract to be issued. Weston and Sampson. Weston and Sampson accepting the filling up, signing the contract for services. The money comes in. Weston and Sampson can begin work. So that's where we are with this.
Right, we're still not stopping at work.
Well, we haven't stopped it yet because they had other approvals.
They maintain the situation around the COVID.
Dan, have you been up to that area at all? Okay. If there's a site visit planned in the meantime, we'll let you know and if you're available. They have done a lot of work. The houses sit back quite a ways from the road and they have put a riprap where the driveway meets the road so you don't have all that silt running out into the road. The conservation part of it as far as silt socks and other things Lisa is dealing with. When stormwater and conservation work together on a project, we determine who's got the most, if it's a violation. Or in this case, we got three house lots, two of them don't have wetland problems. So stormwater is involved with all three, but Lisa is really focused on that other lot that's got that. And she will handle the stormwater, excuse me, the conservation part because by making sure they put in silt socks and they control runoff and all that on that lot, that automatically fits in with what we're doing, too. But rather than two committees telling them the same thing. So she'll handle that, but she is part of the whole, just like we're part of the whole. So whenever we've had joint projects, we usually determine which, if it's a violation situation, which violations were worse. Is it Conservation Clean Wetlands Protection Act? Or is it stormwater, which is the Clean Water Act? So we have, once we determine that, then we know who's gonna take the lead. We had a cleanup on the Segregance River off Williams Street and CONCOM took the lead on that. Because once the CONCOM concerns were cleaned up, it automatically took care of stormwater issues. We had another project in Tonton that was on the Segregance River. It was a condo site. It wasn't a conservation issue per se. It was a stormwater issue because they were building too close to the Segregance River, which is the boundary, but which is also a major water supply for the town of Dayton. So we got involved with that and stormwater took the lead. CONCOM was with us on it and attended meetings of the Tonton Conservation Commission. But we were able to work through it and get the plans changed to prevent the runoff and protect the river because again, of the water rights and supply up there. So that's what we usually do is determine who's got the worst problem to deal with, okay? So in this case, I think we need a vote to accept the proposal from Weston and Sampson. Send it to the town administrator so a contract can be issued.
Recommend the contractor.
Accept the proposal from Weston and Sampson for the homes on Horton Street.
As presented.
And forward it to the town administrator to issue a contract for services. Now the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there any public input?
They did plant the plants on the.
Did you hook this because the, is there a mic?
Lauren Bosley, 1680 Pine Street. So I was wondering if there was any more news on Brook Street. They did plant the plants on the berm. But you said a lot, when they do plant the plants on the berm, that they're gonna straighten out the basin. That still had a bit of a problem and don't know if you know if they did that.
I'm not aware that either basin has a problem.
You took the picture that still after 72 hours had water in it.
Yeah, that's just the regrading of the stone.
Right, had they done that?
Yeah.
It was supposed to be done when they planted. Had they done that?
I wasn't even know if they were planting. So I wouldn't know.
So I'm gonna check and make sure.
I'll send send an email to Jonathan Prasad, who is the contact person, and ask about regrading. You said the big basin, Tom?
One, yeah, the one closest to the gate.
And I was just wondering, like, who monitors the basin to make sure that it continues to drain within the 72 hours?
I don't think anyone would ever be there. I don't think anyone would ever be there with a stopwatch.
Well, within three days of a big storm.
Which, when did you take the picture, Tom? Would you guess?
That was in the early spring, right? That was, that was early spring.
I would, yeah, it was springtime, somewhere around springtime.
I'll ask if anyone monitored after the rain we just had. Did you happen to notice who did the plantings?
You know, I didn't. I just noticed that they were done. So I had to have been out. But speaking of the plantings, they're already tipping over. So could they possibly, like, stake them in the ground?
I'll find out who's doing it.
Because two have already tipped over, what it looks like to anyway.
I'll find out who's going to go back and stabilize what they plant. How tall, I haven't been down, how tall are these trees?
They're not that tall.
Okay.
No.
Under five feet?
Um, five feet, so maybe.
Okay.
I don't know for sure. It's hard to tell with the distance. And I don't know if you're aware that they are online.
No, I haven't heard that.
I had the electric company tell me that they're online.
Okay, so that means they finished up the work, whatever had to be done because of the panels.
The batteries are in or the switch is actually closed.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if the batteries are in and the switch is actually closed, but yeah, the panels would be energized, yes.
Yeah, they're producing the electric is what the electric company told us. So I don't know about the batteries. Do you know about the batteries if they're?
No, I'll add that to the list.
Okay.
I just need to know too.
Yep.
Just in case all requirements haven't been met, just to let you know.
They, I know, when, when did National Grid tell you they were online?
They told us a couple of weeks ago and they have been online for about two months.
That doesn't make sense.
Well, we, somebody got notification of that happening?
Because I'm sure I've had emails back and forth with Jonathan and Jonathan Prasad and he had said, the last time I checked with him, which I'm thinking might have been, I got in touch with him the last time about the trees, so unless they came on after, I talked to him and emailed him in August, which would have, could have been, could have been. But the last thing he told me was that they had not finished whatever National Grid told them they had to do because the panels sat idle for so long. So, but anyhow, all right, I will send an email to Jonathan Prasad and check on all these things. As far as ongoing inspections, we don't do that, especially since we don't have a stormwater agent. If we still had a stormwater agent onboard, he might make periodic evaluations if he was, if we thought there was a problem. But aside from Brook Street, I don't know of any of the solar farms that have been re-inspected once they went online.
Random inspections.
Okay.
And if it be an above normal storm event, after I get caught up, I would spot visit some, especially something like that, I would tag that with one of my targets, that one in particular.
Okay.
But they wouldn't be scheduled.
Minimum, and I think we were doing two a year. We did have members of the stormwater committee go out and the fire chief was there just to make sure they're mowing and keeping the vegetation down so it's not growing up into the panels and also look to see if there was any erosion or things like that because one of the solar farms on Richmond Hill, when you drive in, it's a tough road and to get to the one behind it, initially there were problems with erosion. So at least once a year, they're monitored to make sure that the basins are being mowed and they're not growing to trees.
Right, right now, it's not a mandate, but coming with the MS4, all of them need to be cataloged and their third party inspected and maintained. And we don't have to do the work, but they have to share the report with us, but that's not mandated yet. So we would have a mechanism. We wouldn't have to go on a property. We can see that something's done, but it's not in motion yet, but that's something that's.
It's coming.
It's coming.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Heather, for the next meeting, date on Sola. Hopefully have information from Jonathan. Was there any correspondence that came in? None? Approval of the minutes for September 17th? Have a motion, please.
Motion to approve the minutes from September 17th, 2025.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Same.
Aye. Three votes for one abstention. Next meeting is set for November 19th, 2025. We are probably going to invite someone from the three projects on Horton Street, the three housing projects to come in. We have not taken action to shut them down, even though there are some violations there. But permit is issued and we're set to go. I think we'll ask them to come in just to give us, if it's just a progress report or whatever, or if there are any violations, we would hear them at that time. Does anybody have anything before we adjourn? Anything that came up, what that you could think of or? I have still not heard back from Bristol Plymouth about the 2026 calendars. I've sent them mail last August through the post office. I've sent at least emails and I haven't gotten a response. Keep trying. I told them I needed at least 200 for the lights on. I hope we don't run into what we did last year, but anyhow. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned at, what's that, 1? What's the same?
138.
138. Oh, that's good, right out front, Tom.